Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 25th, to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence to think about whatever it is you want to think about. Thank you, everyone. If you'd please stand and join Alderman Jobson in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the why of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Nine President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, good evening and welcome. Thank you for coming. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your opinions and comments, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but to set your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Just as a reminder for folks in here, if you'd please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of someone talking. If you want to talk to the council, please come at the appropriate time to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not as to any one individual by title or name, okay? When addressing council, please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you. And again, as a reminder, only warning against disruption is right now, so we want to hear from everyone, so please don't disrupt anyone. We want to hear from everybody when it's time to talk. All citizens should be able to speak up without disruption. You'll be asked to leave if you disrupt this meeting. Thank you. Will, Alderman, please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for October 11th?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? City Administrator Spiegel, anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. Will, Alderman, move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for October 18th, 2023?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one proclamation this evening, and I'll read. City of Davenport proclamation, "Whereas the City of Davenport, Iowa recognizes the importance of giving children safe, loving, and permanent families through adoption, and whereas more than 114,000 children in the United States foster care system are waiting to be adopted, and whereas to help these children find permanent nurturing families, the local courts of Scott County will recognize and observe National Adoption Day on Saturday, November 4, 2023, to finalize the adoptions of local children, join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions, and whereas this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and Puerto Rico will offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through adoption. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim November 4, 2023, as National Adoption Day in Davenport, and in so doing, urge all citizens to join the national effort to raise awareness about the importance of adoption." I'll accept a motion to approve. Motion in second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And Eric Severide, usually here, but I'll make sure he gets this proclamation when we see him on November 4th. Thank you. And we have one presentation today. As I mentioned last week that this would come, so I'm happy to announce the City of Davenport's Finance Department again received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The award represents a standard of excellence and transparency in budgeting, and the city has received the award consecutively now for 29 years. The city met the nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation that included representing the budget document as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, performance evaluation tool, and a strategic plan. I would like to recognize the City of Davenport Finance Department, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator Mallory Merritt, Management Analyst Hannah Whitehurst, and Manager Analyst Matthew Cullinan, for their dedication to ensuring that the City of Davenport practices with the highest principles of government budgeting and continuously preparing budget documents of the very highest quality. I would also like to recognize the Davenport City Council members for setting the foundation of the budget process with strong budget policies, and the citizens of Davenport for their contribution to the success of our city by completing the biannual citizen survey. Congratulations, Team Davenport, and I'll meet Ms. Mallory Merritt and her team at the podium, please.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations, job well done.
Congratulations, job well done.
Thank you, please.
Mallory Merritt, CFO. We thank you for everything that the council does during our budget process. It's certainly very comprehensive at this point, and a special thanks to both Hannah and Matthew for everything that they do in putting that all together for us. And we look forward to being back here shortly with everything for FY 2025. It's underway, and everything is tracking along just fine for right now. Thank you.
Okay, next, petitions and communications. Anyone? I see Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I'm just saying, I'm letting people know I have a ward meeting tomorrow at Cafe Express on Locust Street across from the old Washington Elementary, and it's from 5:30 to 7:00. All are invited, Cafe Express. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Just a reminder, everybody out there, that the Halloween parade will be Sunday, October 29th. It steps off at 2 o'clock. It will run Pershing along Second and then up to Third Street. So, hope you can join us for our annual parade, and Trick or Treat then is Tuesday night from, I'm looking at you, I think it's 5:00 to 7:00, so I should have checked that. 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you very much. So, happy Halloween, everyone.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderwoman McGinnis covered my Halloween bases. I'll add quickly, on Friday, there's a Halloween hike at Sunderbrook Park, and it's our final freight house, at the Freight House, at 6:00 PM. Again, just to repeat, because sometimes it moves around, we got Trick or Treat on Tuesday, the 31st, and this Friday, although it's not technically an event, a city event, there's a demolition derby at the fairground, which is pretty neat. I wanted to add my congratulations for the certification, and, you know, when I was first elected, that was something that I turned a curious eye towards and openly asked the question if all of these little accreditations really added up to anything, and I've heard some curiosity from individuals recently about that as well, and my verdict is it really does add up to quite a bit. When all of your agents, or all of your departments are accredited by these different agencies, you don't have to necessarily think as much about what it really does, but think about all the things that it really guards against. These aren't easy to get. You really have to have all of your items in order. It guards against any kind of attitude of what I'll call the good old boys syndrome. It guards against false narratives, any biases. It really just opens up each department for an independent audit that really lets somebody give the community a second opinion, a third opinion, that these guys are really professionals doing their great job. And Ms. Spiegel, I want to thank you in particular, because I know that this is something that you helped push us towards, and I think it goes a long ways to tell the community how good a job that their staff is doing for them. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you. For all the driver. Straight between Division and Marquette. Progress is moving along good. Let's hope the weather cooperates with us, but please, when you're traveling on the side streets north and south of Locust Street, let's keep in mind there's a lot of kids, and people are traveling awful fast. So, please, slow down. I don't want to see anybody get hurt. Like I said, construction's moving along good. They're on the other side of the road now, so please, when you're driving on the side streets, please, slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll go to the individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. The first item is a first consideration of ordinance for case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center 6th Edition in the 5600 block of Tremont Avenue from light industrial to multifamily residential. Note, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, so for the council, it requires eight votes for passage. Is there any public with comment? And please remember, name, order, address, if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Thank you.
Tom Pasternak, Davenport Attorney, attorney for the petitioner, Anthony Properties. So, again, at the Committee of the Whole, we kind of set forth what the essence of the arguments are in the nature of this rezoning. The property is currently a 10-acre parcel. It is currently zoned I-1. The petitioner would like to do multifamily to expand the reserve, which is right next door to the west. So, to do that, of course, the rezoning is necessary to take it, downzone it from I-1 to multifamily. And we know what the arguments are from the city in terms of their staff report. They basically say, hey, it's in derogation of the comp plan, so therefore, it's got to stay that way. We cannot have multifamily there. It's nonconforming with the rest of the neighborhood, and we want to preserve I-1 property. That is the essence of the objection. I thought at the Committee of the Whole that we adequately challenged the city's arguments in terms of comprehensive plan. Anytime we want to make a change, we do make a change, and in fact, you know, the bottom line is, I think we've got the Cusino meeting, the reading, for the second reading, that's going to be a change of the comprehensive plan, where it's just the opposite, where you're going to be doing a, from what I can tell, a downzoning or an upzoning of the property from multifamily to I-1. So, the comp plan will change. The comp plan always changes. So, that, to me, is not what I would call a real hard argument for the city to hold on to. Nonconforming also seems to me to be somewhat of a problem, mainly because I'm my neighbor, okay? I'm a multifamily apartment complex. I'm going to be putting the exact footprint on the other side. I agree that there's industrial all around, but there's vacant property on the bottom. To me, again, the notion is, to be nonconforming would actually have to be that it doesn't, it shouldn't exist there, okay? I'm definitely what I would call a conforming use. So, in my mind, the biggest issue is whether or not we need to preserve the I-1 property. And I guess, from my perspective, there's sufficient I-1 property here. I think I've made that argument before. We can talk about shovel-ready or whatever else the case may be, but the bottom line is this: You have property that's set there at least for 30 years as an I-1 designation and hasn't gone anywhere. What does that say? In my mind, it says that it's time for this property be transitioned. Again, as I indicated, if we were doing the comp plan today, we'd probably look at that property now, knowing what we know with the reserve being there, and saying that it's transitional property. I have the developer here today. I also have the seller's representatives here today. So, to the extent this council has any questions, I'd love for them to go ahead and answer the questions that you have. I guess the bottom line from my perspective is, why is multifamily not an appropriate use for this property? I don't have a good answer for you. Hope you guys do, because that's the only way. You shouldn't be able to rezone it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Run, Swinney. Davenport Rock Island. I look at the zoning, and there's a lot more than just rezoning. Wow. One, it doesn't fit the area, and two, they reject it for many reasons. Inconsistent. We spent how much money rezoning and designating areas? Here we go again. Well, maybe we can slide this one in. No. It has health, public health, safety, and welfare of the city impacts. This letter is very eye-opening from the rejection, from street size that fire trucks wouldn't fit in right, and other things. It's not a good area. It's not a good fit. We spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars zoning everything, and time after time, they come before this council and want it rezoned. Well, this should be enough. There's more factors than just rezoning and what it could be used for. We have a planning and zoning. Yes, it takes eight votes, but I'm urging you to reject this because it's not consistent with our overall plan for the city. You know, that's a good area. We're starting to pick up on people coming in, buying properties. Yes, look at the industrial park, you know, complex north of the interstate. How long it took? I mean, folks, we got to put a halt to some of this stuff. We're going to pay money to rezone and classify areas, and why are we here? Why don't we just erase everything and let them build where they want? It's totally inconsistent with the area and with the rejection from our zoning and planning. I think it should be turned down. So, that's my opinion. I hope you guys vote no, and I hope it doesn't pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Casey? Okay. So, if someone else wants to talk, if you'd stand by the podium so I know someone else wants to. Thank you.
Sean Stunkel from Hawkeye Comer for Real Estate. I represent the seller in the matter that is currently being discussed for the Humane Society land and the 10 acres that Anthony Properties is trying to get rezoned. So, as I understand everyone's concern around the ingress, the egress, and the, you know, taking away from the I-1 zoning, and those properties that are within Davenport, and what's that going to do to the city, the one thing I think that we have to step away from is what is the seller? And when we think about the seller and we think about what it is that they are trying to accomplish with this parcel, as I represent them, they are my priority. And my priority is that they've been sitting on this as a donation and a property that was deeded to them around 1996, and it has been sitting there and vacant since then. Yes, they have growth, they have plans. This particular site does not fit into those plans for them. We have some concerns around the soil for them, as it looks to be, if you're building a larger, more industrial property on that land, the soil is soft, there is testing for it that is not going to really truly allow what we consider, you know, an industrial building that is going to allow larger semis, box trucks, things of that nature, to be able to operate on that particular parcel. With the entrance that is off of Tremont, yes, we understand it's narrow, it's going to potentially cause some issues with traffic coming through. As you're looking at larger vehicles and larger trucks, the more narrow that that may be, the access point, we believe, for some of the semi, the trailers, the tractors that are going to go through there, it's going to be much easier for vehicles coming in and out for, you know, those that are living within a multifamily complex. So, as we look at this type of project, in my client's mind, when they got the offer, it is just, yeah, this is great, let's move forward with it. We don't have any current uses for it. We have not had any offers on the table since it's been listed in November of 2020. So, with that said, I would really like the council to really consider this as a pact, to pass this zoning change, because not only is it going to be good for the waiting list for the multifamily users that are out there, and for the current reserve area that Anthony Properties has, it is also just really beneficial for my client, you know, to be able to turn this property over to them to allow for some additional housing to be built. So, with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them, but I do believe that it is in the best interest for my client for this zoning change to go through.
Thank you. If you're done. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Hoyer. I'm a commercial real estate broker in Davenport. I live in Riverdale, Iowa. I, most of my development for the last 46 years has been in Davenport. Last 22 years, I've been in commercial real estate. Jeff Miller, who represents the seller as a commercial real estate broker, had called me about a week ago. We are competitors. And he said to me, he says, would you take an unbiased look at this property? My niche is industrial development, development in affordable housing and whatnot. So, I took a look at it. It's, I think, not appropriately zoned at this point in time. There's a couple reasons why. Industrial zoning on this, it's a flagged lot, which basically is a narrow entrance. It's a Tremont address, but it's in back of the front beach property, as they call it. I don't think that, for a couple reasons, it's adequate for industrial. As the agent just said, that represents the seller, that it's soft dirt, it's not shovel-ready, the topal on the ground is not adequate for industrial use, and the ingress and egress of that lane that you're talking about, for truck traffic, semi-traffic, would not be feasible, to be honest with you. It's going into a T-intersection. It'd have to be lighted. There's a lot of different things that would add to the cost of this, and that's why it's been sitting for so long. If you rezone it to multifamily, it's just basically an extension of what the current development is. The current development has a couple hundred units in it, I believe. They pay 16, or $160,000 in property tax. This is going to be about half the size of it, from what I understand, which would lend to say, okay, it's going to be about $80,000 a year in property taxes. The, I believe that with that kind of, tax base helps everybody. It just, you know, whether you're residential, commercial, industrial, more tax base we have, the better off it is for any property owners that are in Davenport. I think that a multifamily would go real well with it. They'll not have to soil amend as much, and that is one of the biggest problems with it, as I mentioned, the soft dirt that's on it. You're not going to be able to put an industrial site for at least a year or better to soil and mend and to get the compaction correct. The visibility of it on an industrial basis, it's going to be behind some buildings eventually that will be built. There's a lot of ground available for industrial all over the place. It's supply and demand. There's been a good supply of industrial ground. Up on 76th Street, there's 60 acres. It's on the north side of 76th Street, out by MA Ford. There's another 10 acres that's right next to the Freight Line truck. There's 90 acres of ground that is on Hickory Grove Road in Fairmount, the southwest corner. There's many opportunities for somebody that wants industrial development. So, it's going to be an opportunity of who's going to buy what. I really believe with, you know, the need of multifamily and affordable multifamily, you'd be voting against that. So, please consider all the other aspects that are involved in this. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
If someone has questions, all our folks will call you up when it's their turn. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none? Okay. Will, Alderman, please move first consideration of this ordinance. Motion in second. Any discussion from all their folks? Alderman Kelly.
I have a couple questions. I guess I'm not. I have a couple questions for the young lady, the first Realtor. You guys keep talking about this soil. I'm not an expert on any of this, so just help me out. It's conducive to live on this soil, but it's not conducive to work on this soil.
Sure.
So, make me understand how that works. One, and two, when you're saying multi-unit, are we talking floors, so like 1, 2, 3, 4 floor apartments? So, make me understand the weight of industrial building compared to apartment building, one. And two, we're talking about traffic. So, I get traffic, so the traffic coming and going, so when you have multi-folks living in one area, you're going to have as much, if not more, traffic coming and going, because a lot of folks live in apartments where there's two or three people that have vehicles. Three, and what is affordable housing to your organization? I don't know who can answer that one, but those are just some questions that I got from the information that you guys were just telling us.
With your permission, I'm going to also call Mr. Schu up here to discuss some of this, but from my perspective, when it comes to developing, and I am not a commercial and industrial developer, however, when we look at a lot of industrial buildings that have, you know, five or six feet of concrete, they have got some, you know, the footings that have to be put in, the amount of pressure that is at the, just the base of a general industrial building is going to be quite a bit more, in my opinion, than what Mr. Schu and Anthony Properties is going to need for their multifamily development. So, and then furthermore with that, the weight of the heavy trucks that are coming into any industrial lot, there's a lot more weight on that than a general, you know, vehicle that's coming back, back and forth through there. So, the compaction that is needed in that parcel, basically kind of what they explained to us from Terricon, because we have a significant report, a Geotech report, that explains that, it really is just like cotton balls right now, so that if you walk on that, the soil itself is just truly that soft, and there is going to be anywhere between a 12- to 18-month process in order for them to come in, to start putting in some fill dirt, and to go through this process to determine the compaction. And so, as the seasons change, as the weather continues to come down and hammer on it, you're going to build in a lot more of a solid base for really any building. And in this particular juncture, that is really why the Humane Society, my client, has not gone down that path, because there is, they, what they need and the growth that they need, they would rather just stay put than to have to figure out how to put more dollars into the dirt, into the area, to get it to what they need. So, that is just my opinion, and I can let Mr. Schu speak to their.
Hold on before Mr. Schu speaks. Let me tell you why I'm still struggling. You keep saying my opinion. Do you want to hear my opinion?
Yes, sir.
Or do you want to hear a fact? So, I'm struggling, that's all. But keep going.
No, I, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah. No, whatever I can do, whatever we can do to help clear things up.
Go ahead.
First, I'm Brian Schu. I'm the Director of Development for Anthony Properties out of Dallas, Texas. We are the ones that own, or develop and own currently the reserve. We have a considerable waitlist there of over 100 people. We have had a considerable waitlist ever since that property opened, I think, four years ago or so, and we would like to help with that demand problem. Getting to the soils issue, so one of the first things that you do as a developer is do a soils test, which involves boring, getting some core samples, finding out what's really under the surface. Either the Humane Society or the brokers, their representatives, had done one, I think, a year and a half or two ago, under the assumption that it was going to be an industrial property because of its zoning. The information that Sean just stated to you about a 12- to 18-month wait period, that sort of thing, soft cottony soils, that's all factual based on the soils report that they got. And so, that's, I mean, it is what it is for an industrial-type use. Our use, on the other hand, involves, first of all, a much smaller footprint, okay? Instead of 100,000-square-foot building or 60,000-square-foot building, we're building a multi-story, a three-story building that's got a much smaller footprint, therefore, it doesn't need nearly as much foundation work. So, we've already had our soils report done. We went ahead and did that, and we got it back up, I don't know, a week or two ago, and the soils are definitely soft, but it's nothing that we have never encountered before, and it's much more palatable for a multifamily project than it would be for an industrial project. If you want to know more of the details, underneath the foundation, you can do what's called a rammed aggregate pier, which is basically drilling a hole in the ground, dumping a bunch of rocks in it, and then beating the rocks into submission until the ground doesn't move anymore, and then you put your foundation on top of that. So, that's something that we can do. It would be much, much harder for, as Sean stated, a building with a very, very thick foundation, you know, loading docks, having to build to specs so that 18-wheelers can bring in heavy loads and that sort of thing. That's just a much, much heavier ask for an industrial developer.
Right on. Well, I was just trying to clarify the difference for me and folks like me who don't know.
Sure. Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
You good, Alderman Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. This is in 8th Ward. And this really is a different type of development, if you've had a chance to tour it, than a lot of your typical apartment complexes. What they've done with the current, what they've done with the current development is they have been able to work around the topography that they have, by the way that they place the buildings. They're long and one or two apartments deep, right? So they also can identify where they have problems on the site and design the concept for where they place the buildings. So that helps a lot as well with the soil problems. We need this kind of housing in Northwest Davenport. Like he said, it's, well, let me ask a question first. Mr. Schu, could you explain the demographic that you're aiming at with this?
Yeah, so the first phase of the reserve is going to be very, very similar to what we're proposing for the second phase. Very similar unit types, unit mixes, that sort of thing, amenities. And our properties tend to cater more to the younger professionals and empty nesters, people especially up in this area that like to lock and leave, go south for the winter, that kind of thing. So you won't find many three-bedroom units in our project. You won't find, you know, kids' playgrounds everywhere, that sort of thing. You will find properties that, you'll find units that are catered to folks that work from home and folks that are looking for, you know, Class A accommodations.
And also, the grounds are kept very nicely. It's fully fenced?
It is fully fenced, yes.
Yeah, and they have walking trails on the inside. It's also near the bike path.
Correct.
So that also is a good thing for, you know, young people and retired people as well. The entrance is actually 40 feet wide, which is okay for cars, difficult for trucks, industrial-type trucks, right?
Agreed.
So you could actually have a couple of lanes?
We could. Well, we've already had our civil engineer look at it, and actually it can accommodate three lanes. So we could, if you know the area, the driveway coming out would dead-end into Tremont, does not go across, so it would not be a four-way intersection, it would be three-way. But it's wide enough to accommodate one lane in and then two lanes out, so you could have a dedicated left to go north on Tremont and dedicated right to go south on Tremont. So it would shorten up the stacking, if there is any.
And you can design the concept for where you place the building so that it's fully available for fire.
Correct.
Response, which is what you've done on the original.
Exactly.
Correct?
Yep. So on the, on the first phase, we have a ring road, which effectively looks like the eye of a needle kind of thing, where the buildings kind of surround it. And all the access from the fire vehicles is frontside. Now, obviously, we had to meet code, and so they have backside access as well, but this would be something probably similar. The good news about things like access and fire, turning radiuses and that sort of stuff, this is a 10-acre piece of property. We're only proposing to put probably four buildings plus a small clubhouse on it. So from that perspective, we're not, we're not even coming close to maxing out the property. So if we find out that, you know, the soils are extra soft right here, we can likely move the building to a different part of the, of the site. And so, you know, any kind of concerns with turning radiuses and that sort of thing, we should be able to accommodate.
And there was a question about this being a source of crime. It's fully fenced. The type of people who live there, like you said, young people, retired people, any crime that's been occurring in the industrial area isn't associated with your current.
To the best of my knowledge, that's correct.
That we know, yeah.
Yes.
And the noise, it's storage units.
Right.
To the east. That's all that's there. So there's, there's nobody to be concerned with there. So thank you very much.
Sure.
The way I see it, we don't have very much of this type of housing in the 8th Ward in Northwest Davenport. We've already shown, they've already shown that it's, that it's desirable, that there's 100 people on a waiting list. This land hasn't been developed in 40 years. It probably is not suitable for industrial because of the access and the soils. And I really would like to see this go through in the 8th Ward. I really think we need it. We need more housing, and this is, people want it. We've shown that people want it. So I would encourage my colleagues to, to support this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman Jobin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this rezoning, I'm fairly ambivalent. You know, I will kind of yield to, to the ward alderperson on this, and I definitely have no, no problem with moving something like this forward. Another consideration, I've typically done that in my time on council with, with these ordinance, ordinances there that have probably been a little bit more controversial. Couple of my takes on this, you know, it's being built as an extension of the reserve, there's actually no physical connection to the first phase and the second phase. And I've had some conversation, thank you, Mr. Schu. I mean, for those that maybe haven't been out there yet, I mean, we've got a creek, a trail, and woods that'll be in between the two properties. Now, the reserve is a very nice property. Done, done an exceptional job with it, and if they're going to do the same with this next phase, kudos to you. But to sell me on it's an extension of the reserve, it's not. I mean, this is something completely different, obviously modeled in the same vein. That's just, just kind of my take on it. You know, we talked about preserving the I-1-type zoning. Not too long ago, I think it was maybe in my, my first term, we had a rezoning issue, I forget which ward it is, and I think 7th, just south of 46th Street there, which we're kind of talking about preserving open space when Church wanted to rezone some land there, and, you know, we were kind of mindful of that. I don't know if we continue to be mindful of these types of things going forward. And then I guess my last point would be, if we do look to rezon this, in the end, I would inquire about maybe putting some sort of twilight period on this. Reason why I say that is, in the 6th Ward on the corner of Utica and 58th, prior to my time on council, there was a quasi-controversial rezoning of land, and nothing ever developed on it. And it's kind of sitting at a multifamily housing parcel right now. And so I guess I would say, let's maybe talk about that a little bit more. So in case the developer does get into this and more of their studies show that, man, we're, we're really not going to be able to develop this as a multifamily housing, you know, maybe our market studies show that people aren't going to want to move in next to a bunch of storage facilities and a woods and all that, then maybe things can revert. So that's kind of some of my takes on it. I will vote yes tonight, definitely move it, move it forward and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. Alderman Gripp.
All right. Question for Corporate Counsel Warner. It's my understanding you can't put a twilight on a, on a rezoning, right? You either rezon it or you don't rezon it. And then if they fail to implement whatever their plan is and you want to change it, then you would have to go through the rezoning process again.
That's the best practice. Typically, you don't sunset a rezoning ordinance. Correct.
Okay.
Because of the, whenever you change a zoning, you want to have a full-fledged process. And so if you sunsetted it, there would be a lack of a process on the backside.
Yeah. So thinking about, but thinking about that, Alderman Jobin, I was thinking, well, how could you do that? You could essentially, and you can't, well, you can't commit a council, but you could say, if a development hasn't happened in two years, the, the city would come back and rezon their land for them back, right? We would be the petitioner in the rezoning and try to take it back. I guess that's one way to go about it. But I just wanted to clarify, because that does come up in rezonings quite a bit, the sunset or the clawback, and it's not really a tool in our toolbox. So I, you know, again, I kind of said what I said last week, which is, we've got a very good developer here with a good track record in the city of Davenport. He's done a couple of developments, both of them are very good. The product that he is, is bringing is also a very good product, and it's, it's multifamily housing, right? Something that we have a need for in Davenport, and it's here before us now. So there is a lot to like about the project. There are a couple of concerns that have been brought up, right? So how does multifamily interact with industrial? That's one of the concerns brought up by the staff. And how do you maintain basically the stock of industrial that you have? So I think that the biggest concern with keeping that stock is, what type of investment will you get there if you don't get this? And I, I do think from an industrial development standpoint, everything I've learned out in the industrial center in northeast Davenport is, the first thing that any developer, industrial developer does is they come in and they evaluate the soil. And if, if they can't build on the soil, it's really a non-starter, because it gets so expensive, right? So potentially, this helps with that. And the place I would point my colleagues to, if you want to see an example, because it's where my brain goes to every time I think about this, is we have an example of multifamily by I-1, not even a mile away. So 46th and Grand is a pretty good example. And I think it, I think it works. So I can get there. I've been trying to support Alderman Lee in her doing her fact-finding and support her and asking the council to continue to move this forward and have the discussion. And we'll continue to ask questions and address concerns and see where we, where we end up.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Before I go to someone's second, Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. If I could, and I am, I am willing certainly to take a look at this and certainly move it forward tonight for future discussion. I'm not sure how it will come down in the end. If I could, if staff could come up, please, and answer some questions.
Lord Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. So this area surrounding it is also industrial, correct?
Correct.
And now, right now, it's storage units?
Correct.
What level of industrial could it be? What is the most extreme level of industrial that could happen here in the future?
There's several uses within the industrial zoning district that it could go to manufacturing. You can, you could do car dealerships. You can, you can do car repair. So some other options along those lines as well.
And do, are there a lot of, there were, I know there was a discussion of large parcels. It sounded like they were more at the edge of the city, not in the middle of the city. And I know we, you know, that's a question anyway about industrial in the middle of the city, but are there a lot of these kinds of parcels available for industrial in the city, not at the edge?
In the city. So intercity, no, this size, generally not really. A lot of what we've been seeing are under an acre or around that, in the more centrally located part of the city.
Is there a request for this kind of parcel?
Yeah, I ran some numbers, and in the last three years, the city, for just green, open land, green space land that's zoned I-1, we've, we've put approximately 320 acres of land into development, so it's no longer vacant land. That averages out to about 16 acres per project, so there's 20 projects. Taking out the outlier, which is Amazon, you're still looking at about nine acres of land per site, from, from what I have seen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Before I go back to someone talking twice, Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff report says that this isn't consistent with the overall plan, and I take staff's recommendation to heart. I always weigh, put a lot of weight on that. But my gut is challenging me on this one, so, so it's been worthy of harder consideration. It's not consistent, and it's not conventional. But what I'm asking myself is, is if there's a version that it, it could be done well. And looking at the staff report, it says that I-1 uses for industrial are enclosed, low-intensity, with minimal, if any, I ran out of time, I didn't write that down, outside disturbance, or disturbance to the outside world, as I remember it. So that bodes well for putting residential budding industrial. And then, you know, our own ordinances and codes support the opportunity for this, and if residential can coexist on the same blockface as industrial, is that necessarily a bad thing? Our industrial, our ordinances and codes do things like require fencing, enclosed fencing for outside storage and around, around these industrial uses, and they require the parking lots to be paved. The buildings themselves have to be kept up well. So, you know, the streetscape there isn't necessarily smoke stacks and, and raw sewage or something like, the industrial word paints in your mind immediately. So that's where I see daylight of opportunity to make this work. The uses that I'm familiar with, that are presently back there, and I appreciate that we need to look at this with a generational perspective, but presently, they're relatively sleepy, and some of them are even public-facing businesses, if you include the larger industrial area that also kind of goes south of 53rd. And I don't know that a little increased traffic count would necessarily be something that wouldn't actually benefit them. Alderman Jobin, you make a very good point. You know, can this be done well? This is before us with a developer who I think would do it very well. And yet, if his vision doesn't come through, and, and you're painting a picture with a different developer in that neighborhood, it could also be done pretty poorly. So I, I leave my consideration open, but I think there's really good daylight here for, for doing something that's a little less conventional than maybe our overall plan initially imagined. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anybody else who has time? Okay, I'll go back to Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I just responded to an email to a Cathy, so if you guys could give me, bring me up to speed. I'm just trying to understand for the common folks, so some of us who's been on council and have been quiet forever, that just want to learn, so we can, I, we can sidebar, so. But I appreciate your time. Whoever, Cathy McGlory. So, yeah, so.
Sorry, sir. We just.
No worries. Oh, no, I'm saying, I'm willing to be brought up to speed, so I, I don't have any more questions.
Sir, no, no. If Alderman Kelly wants to talk with you, he'll call you up and talk.
Yep, no, so.
Great. Thank you. Calling her will get to me.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Just remember, this is first consideration, so think about that, okay? Seeing no one else, Brian, please call the roll for first consideration.
Because this is a.
Ms. Jobin, we're done. Okay, do you, are you buzzing in to talk for a second time?
I just want to be clear on the vote we're making on this. A yes and a no is, means what?
So yes to pass.
Okay. Just make.
Thank you. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll on first consideration.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Jobin.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
And McGinnis.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. This moves to second consideration, okay? The next one is a resolution approving the planned specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Modern Woodman Park Fire Suppression System Replacement Project. Is there any public with comment? Okay. And Mr. Dale, if you just wait one second, we'll let everybody who wants to leave for this last one leave, and then so we can hear you. Okay, please continue. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmar, and I live in the 6th Ward. Let me begin by saying I'm confused. I've reread the Modern Woodman Park contract three times. I've reviewed our expenditures over the last few years, and I've come, come to the following observation. How many of you remember the old character, Wimpy, from the old. from the old Popeye cartoons? You know, his, his favorite saving was, "I will gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today." From what I can conclude, the leasing, and we all know who that is, could give old Wimpy some, some lessons in how to get what you want today and delay any Tuesday for not just a few days, but for five or 10 years. He's not only paid rent over at least the three to five years, he has taken what I call an advance on his allowance towards the SIF Stadium Improvement Funds and CIF Capital Improvement Funds through at least 2029. Now the sprinkler system needs to be replaced. And guess what? It's the Tuesday that none of us thought would come. Maybe if we hadn't paid to build the, to build the air-conditioned and the birthday party room for nearly a million dollars a few years ago, we'd have the money. What does a, what in the heck does a birthday party room have to do with baseball? And recently, $375,000 was approved to cover another party play area. And the whole Ferris wheel adventure. Yeah, he says he bought it, but we made all the payments. We insure it. We pay all the maintenance. We pay all the utilities. He charges admission to ride our, our Ferris wheel and he keeps the money. Pretty good gig. I'm confused. Maybe if we didn't pay to have his trash picked up every week over the last 10 years, we'd have some more money. I'm still confused. I don't know about any of you, but I pay to have my trash picked up every week. Or maybe he could share some of the $100,000 annually he gets for naming rights to our stadium. I'm getting more confused. You had the opportunity to rewrite the contract a few years ago. The new contract was even worse than the old contract, but it passed on a nine-to-one vote. Now, I'm not going to ask anyone from staff to explain this to me. That's not my job and it's not their job, but it's your job. Hey, a million here, a million there, a few more years advance. Tuesday, yeah, whatever. Maybe Tuesday will never come. My head's starting to spin and yours should be too. I'm going to sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, okay. Will an alderman please move the resolution?
Motion in second. Any discussion from alderfolks?
Alderman Dunne.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I realize this is our stadium and we have to pay for the fire protection. And I understand a lot of what Mr. Gilmore is saying. I had an opportunity to look at this system about a year or so ago. And I'd like to know who was tasked to do the maintenance on this?
Clay Merritt, Engineering Capital. So per the agreement that we have with the baseball team, their maintenance staff performs day-to-day maintenance on the facility.
Okay, so their, their, the stadium owners are tasked to do the maintenance on this system?
That is correct.
Okay, so when I looked at the system, I seen frozen and broken pipes, which tends to me there was no maintenance done. So I know it's our system and I know we got to pay for it. I know the system may have been old. But I think a lot of the, the lack of maintenance is what's caused a lot of this problem, in, in my opinion. So I'm concerned that when it's been this kind of money, who's going to do the maintenance on this system? Is that going to be the team?
Moving forward, per the contract, that is the team's responsibility.
Perfect. Can we make sure that we have that in writing with the ownership? That they're, they're responsible, they're going to take care of it. And if anything happens, we're not going to come back and pay the bill.
Going to have that conversation with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunne. Alderman McGinnis.
I too share the feelings of the comments that have already been made about this tonight. I did have a question and, Mr. Merritt, it may be you who answers it, it may not. So, so the question is, how did the, the system wasn't working fully last year? So what happened? How did, how did we have baseball?
So this year or last year, just for clarification purposes?
This year, I'm sorry.
Okay, no.
Last season, this year.
You're fine. So while the system was not working properly, we alongside the fire marshal and the fire department ensured that enough safety protocols were in place and that were routinely checked on and followed to ensure that we could have safe games during this stretch.
And I don't know if our fire marshal is here, but would that likely be the case next year?
That is, no, we would, our, the plan is to, per year approval, go out to bid, pending a successful bid, secure a contract, bring this back before the city council for approval of that contract. Once that moves forward, we hope to have the project in place prior to the, or excuse me, the infrastructure in place prior to the start of the next season.
So if we, I'm just playing devil's advocate a bit. If we voted not to approve this tonight, would the fire marshal be likely to say, "Well, you can have the same system you had last year of protocols, special protocols"?
Unfortunately, I am not fire marshal, so I'm not able to.
I don't believe it's here.
I'm not able to speak for him.
Could we, is, could the fire chief speak to that or not?
Well, actually, if I, if I could chime in there. It's not an ideal situation for us to work around what should be the permanent fix, which is a sprinkler system. Sometimes those temporary setups are what's necessary to get you to the permanent solution. The longer that goes on, the more risky it is for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Spending on this never, never feels great. Spending on the ballpark is always a little challenging. But for perspective and backing up, again, my compliments go to the staff because at a time when it was actually pretty scary to talk baseball because a lot of teams across the country were losing their minor league teams, we actually were, brought our partner back to the table. And they say the sign of a good contract is when both sides feel a little raw by the, by the negotiation. And I, and I've, I think both sides do. So the deal is much more equitable than it was, thanks to the leadership of staff. And, and we should remember to at least take stock in that as we, again, have to spend once again to maintain our park. But spending on the arts, culture, and in this case, sport, always feel the most frivolous in our city. But as I always remind people that, you know, we can have the smoothest roads in the world, we can have a budget that runs like a clock. But you have to ask yourself, does anybody actually want to live here? And the ballpark that we have down there is a great asset. And I'm looking forward to continuing a good partnership with the River Bandit.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else?
Very good. Brian, please call the roll for this resolution. Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Anne Dickman?
Yes.
A yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. The next one, number three, resolution approving the planned specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for the traffic signalization Third and Fourth Street Two-Way Conversion Project. Is there any public with comment? Staying on, staying on the subject.
My name is Gary Eklund. I live in Davenport, Iowa. And I protest the amount of money being spent on this. I think every single penny is a waste of money that could be better spent. We could convert from sewer bills. We could buy houses. If, for every million dollars that's spent on this re-trafficking thing, the city of Davenport could buy 20, $50,000 houses for a million dollars and give them away. We could eliminate homelessness. For every million dollars that we spend on this, we could eliminate homelessness. Our rental, we could give away, we could give away, we could literally give away 20, $50,000 houses for every million dollars that we're spending on this traffic redo. And if we had two-way streets, I wouldn't be arguing that we shouldn't move them to one ways. But since we have one ways, this is just an extraordinary waste of money. And it's a giant screw you to people who don't have a lot of money and who don't want to see money wasted.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Anderson, Ward Five, thank you for the TV in the hall. Love it. Volume's down, my favorite officer. It's a good day. This scares me because I spent 20 years being a driver, professional driver, all kinds of stuff. I've never heard anybody say that this is a good idea. I've heard so many people, drivers, delivery people, all say that this would clog it up. And if there was any stoppage whatsoever, it would be just a mess. I put my half a life of working in stuff like this to say that I do have some knowledge about it. What I was really hoping for, which goes along with the other traffic problem earlier, is to have more intersection lines painted. The newest thing in my neighborhood is to run stop signs. And I'm too old to get hit again. So I was hoping that instead of this, which is going to be done way in the future, and the future is what I love, but there might be a different way to accomplish the goal. Also, probably not on topic, but there's $1,200 stop signs with solar-powered flashing lights that would really help a lot of intersections. I was hoping that a chunk of this money could go to that. That's $4,800 per intersection. Molene's got a ton of them. And thank you. I, I love living here, so I'm happy as lark.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. My concern is the money that we're spending to change streets that are perfectly fine going both directions. Years ago, I had somebody that I knew who lived at Bluegrass. They had a few drinks. They were on a road they didn't realize changed. And when they came up over the hill, they hit a car head-on. A 19-year-old person lost their life. Somebody lost their eye. And my concern is with the bars that we have down in the areas. Too many people not paying attention and the roads being changed from what they've known for many, many years. Are we going to have to worry about more accidents? Because our police department is tied up with so many other things. We can't afford to have them be out at accidents constantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, will an alderman please move the resolution?
Motion in second.
Okay. Are you coming? Okay.
I'm Dr. Servisini. I lived on Gaines and High for 35 years. That's from Ambrose. And I'm familiar at the city level who's responsible to provide safety, security, and peace for residents, taxpayers, and all that.
Okay, sir, so we're talking about the conversion of signals on the one ways downtown.
Oh, can I, can I get it turned in when you're done?
So at the end, we have public with business?
Beautiful.
Anyone else particular to this subject? Okay, seeing none, will an alderman now move the resolution?
Motion in second. Any discussion from alderfolks? Brian, please call the roll. Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Anne Jobin?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That resolution passes, is adopted. Number four, resolution approving the purchase of a rescue response vehicle from Lenko Industries in the amount of $283,735 to State of Iowa Department of Administrative Services. Is there any public with comment?
Yeah, Gary Eklund. I live in Davenport. I want to be brief. I think this is the Bearcat that was on the, they had the words Bearcat on it last week and this week. It just doesn't say. I want to thank Alderman Kelly for asking the question you did last year, or last week, when the chief came up and explained that they used it, I think, 100 times a year, an armored vehicle that they use apparently for SWAT-type things. And it seems like a lot of money, $283,000. I think he said he's been borrowing it from Bettendorf. And it seems like the kind of thing that in order for Bettendorf and Davenport to save money, maybe they could share one and instead of spending $283,000 for an armored vehicle that's being used 100 times, like I can't imagine Bettendorf uses theirs 100 times a year since Davenport is bigger and has more guns and more crime. So maybe they could share it with Bettendorf. Maybe we could give Bettendorf some of this $283,000 and not spend the money. And, you know, I know there's a lot of guns out there, a lot of handguns, a lot of shotguns, even machine guns. And nobody wants, nobody wants machine guns being fired at the police department. But it, it seems like a lot of SWAT team raids that there's 100 times a year that an armored vehicle is being used. Anyhow, it seems like a lot of money to spend. We all, nobody wants gunshots at the police. But for 100 times a year, maybe we could share it with Bettendorf.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, will an alderman move the resolution?
Motion in second. Any discussion? Very good. Brian, please call the roll for this resolution. Gripp?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. That resolution passes. The next area is a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda. Motion in second. All items on consent. Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Anne Jobin?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. Consent is approved. Next area is other ordinances, motions, and resolutions that are known for tonight. Next area, is there any public with business? And remember, we'd love to know your name or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are. Remember the disruption warning I gave at the beginning. Thank you. Please.
My name is Gary Eklund. I live in Davenport. I want to first speak out in favor of having Davenport City provide legal representation for Alderman Kelly. I think his lawsuit that he's facing involves city business in city hall, city discussions. And I'm opposed to the city providing legal assistance for the people who I believe are white supremacist criminals in the neighborhood department who are being named in lawsuits. That said, I want to, I want to again ask the U.S. Justice Department and the Iowa Department of Criminal Investigations. I have not spoken to the Iowa Department of Criminal Investigations about the 324 main collapse. I'm extremely skeptical that any law enforcement in Iowa is going to do an adequate job of prosecuting crime by city officials, especially one that's, in my opinion, white supremacist motivated. But if the Department of Criminal Investigations is seriously willing to consider prosecuting government officials, lawyers, department heads, so on, I would like to have the people who declared this light, sorry. I would like to have the people who declared this light illegal and came into my yard and destroyed all of these, I would like to have them criminally prosecuted. Since 2021, the city of Davenport has declared it illegal for me to grow blueberries in my own yard. 2021, 2022, 2023. As I've mentioned before, I'm literally a descendant of the Trail of Tears from the original Indian Removal Act. And in my opinion, there's a Davenport, Iowa Indian Removal Act of 2021 and also a Davenport, Iowa uppity black grandmother asking for repairs from her landlord Removal Act of 2021, which was successfully completed in 2022 with city help. And I believe that was a crime. I believe that one of the most bizarre, ugly, mean-spirited white supremacist hate crime in the United States of America in American history is the city of Davenport coming into my yard in 2021 saying in essence that all of my black tenant neighbors and I are inferior, subhuman, lowlifes without equal rights to people they regard as superior. Who do they regard as superior? People like Andrew Wald. I don't know Andrew Wald. My comments about Andrew Wald are limited to what I've read in the newspaper. My comments about the city staff, however, are firsthand experiences. And I believe that the top two people in the city's neighborhood department can legitimately be considered to be extreme white supremacists.
That's an effort. No, that's, quit referring to specific people.
Well, I'm calling on, I'm calling on the DCI to prosecute those people if, you know, the idea of an investigation. I'm asking the DCI and the U.S. Justice Department to investigate a hate crime that occurred on December 7th of 2022. I filed a police report. I'm asking them to investigate why that police report was not investigated. I believe that there was a cover-up of a white supremacist crime. I believe that when you send somebody into my yard to destroy my blueberry plants, on the idea that blueberry plants are illegal for me, but legal for him, I don't, you know, that they're they're legal for all of you up there, you know, except for maybe Alderman Kelly, who might be considered inferior by them too. Uh,
Mr. You're, you're done talking. You can, please, you're done. Sit down.
I'm asking the DCI to investigate.
Thank you. Anyone, sorry. Anyone else? Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Ezra Sidran from the Third Ward. Because of the Freedom of Information Act, I have acquired over four hundred documents and hundreds of photographs. I have given copies of these documents and photographs to the Department of Justice, to HUD's Inspector General, to all the members of the Housing Commission, to representatives of elected officials, to candidates for office, to local reporters, and to the attorneys that represent the victims of the collapse of three-twenty-four Main Street. If you read these documents and look at the photographs, you will know with absolute certainty, one, that on the day of its collapse, three-twenty-four Main Street had seventy-four open housing inspection violations. Two, that all rental inspections for three-twenty-four Main Street stopped on August second, twenty-twenty-one. Three, that the city of Davenport knowingly put veterans and Section Eight recipients into a building that city employees knew to be unsafe. Four, that the fire marshal tried to have three-twenty-four Main Street vacated before it collapsed. Five, that Andrew Wald did not have a valid rental license for eighteen months. I respectfully suggest that you all read these documents. There is no way that anybody who has read them and looked at the photos can come to any other conclusion that the city is liable for what happened to the victims at three-twenty-four Main Street. It is inescapable. The evidence is overwhelming. Almost all the answers are in these documents. I know what happened. I know how it happened. I know who is responsible for what happened. The only thing these documents can't tell me is why. Why did the city of Davenport allow Andrew Wald to get away with murder? Why did the city repeatedly protect a slumlord? Why did the city not enforce the orders to vacate? Why did the city pay Andrew Wald a hundred-and-eleven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars over the last five years, even though his buildings were tagged as unfit for human habitation? We will get the answers to these questions when city employees and elected officials are deposed in the course of the seven lawsuits currently filed against the city for the collapse of three-twenty-four Main Street. It has been almost five months and the city's claim of transparency has been utterly worthless. Thanks to the Freedom of Information Act, we have found most of the evidence. The attorneys representing the victims of three-twenty-four Main Street will do the rest.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ron Swedner, Davenport, Rock Island. Yeah, I'm broken, but you know what? I don't give up. I think people from this council know me very well. I come time after time after time. Why? Because I am a voice. I am a voice for many also. I come before you to speak, not to hear my words, but to seek action. Three-twenty-four Main is the worst disaster in Davenport's history. Yeah, I haven't heard much except for the speakers, their names. I understand there's litigation. Oh, we have to investigate what happened, you know? My question to you is, we had this company come in. They flew drones with wonderful technology and mapped that building. We know some of the reasons why it collapsed. I have a few photographs where they had a big section tore out. Photograph taken fifteen seconds later and a chunk of brick falling down. Hmm. You know, as citizens, we have choices. As what you do in your jobs, you also have choices. But you have people that elected you, people that make phone calls, petitions, which you guys have ignored on several occasions. But you know what? We'll see what happens. That's all I can say about that. You know, I'm not here to talk about it in general, but I'm here to talk about how do we fix the city? How do we heal this city? Transparency and openness. I understand there's major suits, but people want answers. It's been five months, folks. We got a candle, candlelight vigil coming up. I'd love to see more than two of you there to honor the citizens that paid the ultimate price because the city failed. They died. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ashana Dixon, Fifth Ward. I just want to say that I didn't bring my children's book today, but you know, it was a bit better tonight, but I think I'm gonna bring it next week because it, some little things, it was just a little rough tonight. And I mean, it can be worked on. Um, it's been almost six months and we have no answers. Um, like I agree with what he said. I understand there's lawsuits, but some of y'all seem like you're very unbothered about what happened at three-two-four Main Street. And I wonder why? Is it because of HUD money, historical property? Y'all guys really just don't care about people who are low income or, you know, need vouchers? Do you not care? African Americans, y'all guys proving that you really don't care about that because we're like, I'm up and a half in, and we have no justice for Tim Kelly. Sorry, before I get pointed ordered. Okay, gotcha. But this has to stop. We, I feel like you do not care. You care about your rich neighborhoods, blue collar, whatever you want to call them. You care about them, but the lower half of us, you don't care about. That's what you're showing us. And that does need to be, that needs to change. That needs to change immediately. And I hope it does. It's gonna be a sad day. It really is. We've been asking for change in Davenport. Y'all guys are refusing to give it to us. Some of you should be really, really be ashamed of yourselves. How you walk in this building where we voted, Davenport voted you in to be our public servants, and you sit here and you give us nothing. You care about what you care about, have your secret ser- uh, security program, except for two. You have your small bit, your meetings in the back. We're sick of it. And it has to change. If you get back in, I hope you really do change. Because then you're just signing yourself for another two years of me coming down here and complaining and a few other, a few other. We're not, I'm not leaving until we see better here. That's all we're asking for. And I'm sick of seeing your faces look like it doesn't move you. What do we have to do? We had a nice meeting yesterday, and it was a cute turnout, too. Of people who was just upset and frustrated about how the lower half is treated so poorly. How that building fell right across the street, right across the street. And all the, Dr. Sidran brings facts. We have bring facts every week. Not just him, us. Bring you facts. What else? Do we need to start telling lies? Before you get emotional? Because that's what you do. Wake up. Please. Do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. Every single week, I sit and pray as I type out what I feel led to say. And every week, it breaks my heart that we're still doing this three days shy of five months because apparently the tragedy does not seem to be a big deal to some of you. But let me tell you, it is a big deal to some that came because the DOJ, Senator Joni Ernst, and Senator Chuck Grassley's offices were here for the town hall meeting last night. I was unable to attend, but I watched it online. And I hope that those of you who didn't attend at least watch it online. It was heartbreaking to say the least. When I heard Brandon Coleman Senior's cousin, Mike Collier, say him and Brandon Junior slept outside every single night, waiting for him to be found, and that he yelled, "We're coming to get you. We're coming to get you, cuz. We're coming to get you. Stay strong." I cried, and you should too. I cannot imagine how Mike felt knowing his cousin was in there somewhere and he couldn't get to him. I cannot imagine how Brandon Junior felt, seeing the devastation of his dad's building and then looking up to see his dad's clothing hanging in the closet completely untouched, not knowing where his dad was in the midst of the, of the debris. Mike said he looked up at the collapsed building, saw Brandon's clothes hanging in his closet. And I'm quoting him, it says, "It haunts me to think that maybe Brandon would have survived if he had been standing in his closet instead of sleeping in his bed." How is it that three innocent men and one innocent woman could just be in their home one moment and then the very next, it literally caved in around them, killing three and maiming one for life? It sickens me that only two people out of this entire council reached out to those who suffered in this preventable tragedy. It sickens me to my core that those of you who contributed to the deaths of Brandon Coleman Senior, Ryan Hitchcock, and Daniel Prean by ignoring emails and turning a blind eye to Andrew Wald's illegal acts have the luxury of going to your expensive homes every night and living as if nothing ever happened. What should happen is that you should be removed from your overpaid positions and your cushy lifestyles, and you should be ordered to stay at a homeless shelter for at least a week or so to understand what many of these people have been put through and are still going through. Why has there been no agenda on the lack of housing for our city's homeless residents? Why has there been nothing about trying to remove the property where three men lost their lives from a man who clearly had no legal right to be a landlord but was being paid by the city to semi-act like one? Why has there been nothing about the sham of a vote that illegally removed Derek Cornet from his, sorry, shouldn't have said that, from his seat and the decision for him to regain it till the end of the term? Why has there been nothing on there about removing an alderman who never shows up for their job, doesn't respond to their constituents' needs, and if they do call in, they hang up the second a resident starts speaking during the open forum? Why has there been nothing on there condemning the use of disgusting racial slurs spoken by one alderman to another alderman and how to stop that from ever happening again? I am so sick and tired of seeing agendas for liquor license approvals, fancy buildings, and wasteful spending on stupid crap when the people of this city are suffering. How can most of you just sit there week after week, stone-faced, not giving a freaking crap about flesh and blood human beings? I will be praying for you to have your heart of stone to be exchanged for a heart of flesh and that you will have your eyes open to the suffering of our city before the devastation becomes any worse. Second Corinthians five-ten says, "For we must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ, that each one of us may receive what is due Him, for the things done while in the body, whether good or bad." Romans two-five says, "But because of your stubbornness and your unrepentant heart, you are storing up wrath when His righteous judgment will be revealed." I'm praying that you will search your hearts and finally do the right thing. The devastation and loss cannot be undone, but you can at least own up to your part and accept whatever consequences happen for it. Today is day one-hundred-and-fifty since the preventable collapse. Election time is coming, and we, the people, are more than well-informed. And thanks to Ezra, we will be using our voices loud and clear on November seventh.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, I live at twenty-one-fourteen Gaines on the hill. And for past six years, I've been under attack, various sorts, breaking and entering.
Name, please.
Uh, Dr. Servistini.
Thank you.
And I'm a homeowner, taxpayer since early eighties in Davenport. And for past six years, I've been under attack by variety of, uh, thuggery, acts of thuggery and acts of breaking and entering and vandalism and all that. And I want to know who's responsible to provide safety, security, and peace in the town. I'm supposed to the city council that orders the police and the other, uh, law enforcement entities how to behave and how to maintain that. That's something that has been missing in my neighborhood. And I'd be appreciative if you could guys somehow, uh, facilitate provision of such a need and put an end to this kind of conduct. I know business, they have to kind of behave themselves in certain ways. Cities, they have to conduct themselves. And that's something that is not being enforced in that area also. City administrator, city council, uh, secretary, executive secretary, all these people have known about this issue since 2019. And there's over eight-nine-hundred, filed nine-one-one with, uh, police and, uh, dispatch, but no positive results were attained. Just, uh, maybe should pass a resolution to place someone, put someone over there to maintain the, what we need over there and get some, life goes on in a proper way. We are living in twenty-first century, and you guys know how to do the best of the business. You are, uh, elected and put in office. Alderman Ambrose was my alderman before, and he said, "I should come and talk to you folks if nothing goes happen." And he's gone for three years now. And, uh, I don't know where is Ryan higher. He didn't like the idea of being contacted.
Sir, please don't use names. I know you haven't been here before, but you speak to the councils of body.
Right. And council, I don't know what's his position. He, uh, basically instructed me not to contact the city administrators and all these people, which is kind of unreasonable. Because when the, things are not done right, you want to results. You go complain, you ask for job performance. I would consider you're allowing me to speak. You understand the situation, the gravity of it, and will take steps to remedy the problems. And I'm at your service. I could be available to you, to provide you any kind of question or answer you want to do, so we can put an end to this kind of nonsense that's been ongoing for past six years. Anything?
Sir, this is our time to listen to you.
Sorry?
We don't dialogue back forth. This is our time to listen to you.
That's fine. Then you will let me know later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Very good. Anything else, Ms. Beal? Motion to, oh, we see, I didn't see another person.
Adriana McBride, Fifth Ward. Um, I guess, uh, just so I'm not reiterating a lot of what you guys know. Um, earlier it was stated that investing in the arts and culture is kind of frivolous. Um, last time I spoke, I mentioned how it's very hard to get young professionals to come and want to live here. That was another question. Who wants to live here? Do you want to live here? Um, no, if you're a young professional. Hell, no. Um, in my field, it's incredibly hard to find work, um, environmentally speaking, because this area doesn't really seem to give a damn about that kind of stuff, um, even when the law requires you to. Um, and so the arts and culture aspect not being prioritized whatsoever, you know, when we want to spend money on Ferris wheels and car, like turning our girlfriend to a carnival, as I call that. Um, and, you know, just maybe turning it into police state. Like, we don't have a problem just throwing tens, thousands, hundreds, millions of dollars toward all these things. Even the fire department getting, you know, luxurious lazy boys and stuff like that. Like, okay, to each their own. But arts and culture is one of those things that when we have all these very stressful situations going on, allows us some reprieve. And I think it's very much important to consider that, investing in it. Um, and actually, I think this is a wonderful area that has a lot of amazing artists that would like to be invested in. Um, there's not necessarily that many artist spaces for people to create and collaborate and, um, showcase their artwork. Um, to me, that is something that kind of keeps me here because I am a creative and I know a lot of creatives in this area who share those sentiments and don't get the support that we very much would appreciate and could help generate economic things coming on here. So, um, I don't know, I would like for you to reframe that opinion. Because we really need some de-stressing, um, and some maybe like other things to focus on and like ways to kind of come together that might not be political. Um, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir, motion to adjourn. I apologize. My bad. Um, will an alderman move to go to executive session to discuss strategy with council and matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five? Motion second to go to executive session. Brian, before you call the roll, just letting everybody know, uh, that we will adjourn from the meeting. We will not, not be coming back here. Please call the roll, Brian. And I'll ask the council to please move your way. back here. Please call the roll, Brian, and I'll ask the council to please move your way up to the second floor. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you. We'll go to executive session. We're leaving from up there. Please move there quickly.